Well, welcome, everybody. I'm going to ask that we all stop the fun side conversation. Sorry, everybody. And then we get going.
You've called your role and I call mine. Is that how we do it? Oh, so I'll do ours. Okay. Okay, great.
All right. Well, thanks, everybody for being here, both those of you around the table and everybody else that's joined us for presentations and discussion today. I'm going to ask that the clerk go ahead and call the council role. This meeting will officially start.
For this.
Here.
Hallie Burton.
Here.
Morales.
Here.
Nash. Sted.
Here.
Willetts. Four present, two absent.
And on the ACHD side, I'll call the meeting order. Thanks, Mayor.
That's so much simpler. All right, go around down to five. Okay. Well, it looks like the first topic that we've got today are updates on 15th and 16th Street, State Street, and then along, excuse me, between 8th and 14th Streets. That's a lot of saying Streets. Welcome. Got Matt Deegan from ACHD and then Tom Woz will be joining. Great.
Mayor, President Pickering, Commission and Council. My name is Matt Deegan. I'm the Safety Engineering Manager at ACHD. Just giving you an update on our 15th and 16th project. So it's basically, it's a pedestrian improvement project. However, it's basically rebuilding both intersections completely for 15th, 16th, and front. I've included our plan sheets in this, just trying to give an idea of what we're doing, but it's RRFBs for the east-west movements on
Matt, do you mind defining what that is?
What's that?
Do you mind defining what RRFBs are?
Rapid Rectangular Flashing Beacon.
Thank you.
So the best example, 8th and River. That's exactly what we're doing here. We're going to put bull bouts on three of the four corners. We couldn't get the fourth in just because of the turning movement and it would have had overtracking and it would not have been a safe situation. But shortening that pedestrian crossing on three of the four corners. And new pavement for both interse-
No, keep going.
Okay.
Continue your thought, Matt. You're great.
New pavement for the entire intersections and minor drainage improvements. Beyond the, it'll be RFBs on the east and west, on both north and south. And it'll function to where when a pedestrian hits the button, all four will flash rather than just two of them.
And I just, Madam Mayor, if I might just kind of give some additional context. So we do have some newer faces to the council, so we're really excited to be here with all of you. And this, we wanted to give you a heads up and a update on 15th and 16th, considering the deaths that have been happening on 15th and 16th, the enormous pedestrian uses with the unhoused population and various shelters at that location. So there's been a lot of media attention about what ACHD is doing, and we thought it would be great to give you guys a little bit more detail about what is on deck and what to expect in the coming year, and then, of course, ask staff any questions or share additional insights that we might consider in improving this segment.
Thanks for that context.
So I guess we kind of have two projects going on here. We have this construction project that will be both intersections, but then and the schedule for this. So this project just bid yesterday. We got an awesome bid and will hopefully be NTP mid next month. Start construction as soon as we can and be done towards the end of July. So beyond the improvements right at the intersection, we're going to implement a slow zone on 15th and 16th. The general distances will be from River to Grove. The exact location to be determined what we can get out there, but we'll have a preemptive sign with the LED markers on the sign alerting drivers of the the slowing or the reduction in speed followed by the location of where they're required for the, or excuse me, for the speed reduction. We're going to implement a 20 mile per hour zone on both streets, just for pedestrian safety because of the high use of pedestrians that are in the road.
Madam Chair, Madam Mayor, I guess just a quick question. Is this the first, I know we have lots of school zones. Is this the first slow zone that we have in Boise?
It is.
It's pretty exciting just because I think we think of school zones as a place where there's a lot of vulnerable community members, a lot of pedestrian traffic, and a lot of cars that are going by at the same time. I think it's really appropriate and I think it's really exciting to see us explore other areas where this might apply for other vulnerable populations with high pedestrian use. I know that this is sort of an idea that I think even the Interface Sanctuary asked us about. Are there ways that this could get treated the same as a, as a school zone? And so I just want to kind of give a hats off to your team. I think this is pretty innovative. I think it's pretty smart. And it'd be interesting to see if there's other areas in the city where that that might apply either now or in the future.
And with the slow zone implementation, that'll happen before the project. So all we need to do is secure the materials to get that in and we're going to go up and put up the signage now. So I would guess about three weeks before we have that speed reduction or speed limit reduction in place. So yeah, that's basically all we've got. I guess before we get into questions, though, this is like our safety engineering groups as we've formed our first big project, and we're pretty excited to see this to go to construction. So with that, I'm here for any questions you may have.
Thanks, Matt. I just want to add, you know, this, the slow zone idea, you know, is really great and it's in addition to some of the other improvements that we've got on track, but of course, that we're trying to work with what the road condition and the road configuration currently looks like now, and that's preventing us, we really need to do an overhaul there, right? So there's a lot of, it's a lot of roadway. It encourages speeding. And so really, we really need to hear from the city on like what your guys' vision is for that corridor so that we can go in and then make the roadway fit that vision since it's no longer serving the current use and potential future use of the folks that live and travel there. So yes, happy to answer questions about the improvements that are on deck, but we really do want to kind of keep an eye on those bigger improvements and would love to learn more about your guys' vision for that so we can start incorporating that as we move along.
Sure, I'll respond to that. One, I appreciate, I do appreciate the design and the work, and this is a great first project for a new conglomeration or team of folks that have done at ACHD, so thank you. On the long-term work, you know, we'll be reviewing with council in early March our long-term goals for the five-year work plan, as well as doing, as you know, there's the, you're part of it, the pedestrian the pedestrian safety or the traffic fatality review committee that is also going to help inform some of the visions and desires that we have along different corridors.
Madam Chair, I might just have something, something to add there. I sit on the Traffic Fatality Review Task Force. We know that 15th and 16th Street is an area where we had two fatalities last year. We also know it's one of our highest areas of crashes reported, and we also know because of the vulnerable population that lives there that there's a lot of stuff that goes unreported, probably more so even than other other areas of town because of the population that's there. The 20 miles an hour is great. On a three-lane, one-way road is sort of a little bit tricky to kind of get people to go that speed, which I think is sort of, you know, what you're saying. And I think that we do need to look at that corridor if we actually want people to be going that speed to be changing the way that we think of it. And I know that we do have our five-year integrated work plan conversations coming up. I know that we have some potentials for some grants that might be coming up as well to do some studying of some different corridors. But I would list 15th and 16th Street as probably one of our more dangerous and more problematic ones that we have. I also think that that's coupled with, it's in two different urban renewal districts. One that's about to expire, another one that's the shoreline one that has a much, much longer life. And so there may be some opportunities there as well. It's also an area where we know there's going to be massive redevelopment. We know Interfaith Sanctuary is moving, but a lot of the populations are going to be staying there because of Corpus Christi and the Boise Rescue Mission. But there's so much land over there, so much old buildings that we know is going to change. I think it'd be really, really smart for us to be looking at that area and figuring out what that long-term plan is. Is it a three-lane, one-way road? Is it a two-lane, two-way road for 15th and 16th and us rethinking all of those? I think we really need to do that, and I think that we need to get that to you probably sooner than later. Because as we see these developments that's happening, it's going to make a difference when we approve something that has an entryway going this way when in the future it could be a two-way street. And so while I do think that we need to have a little bit of time with our five-year integrated work plan, I do think that we need to give some very clear direction to ACHD on what we would like to see. And personally, I think we should be examining the corridor from Emerald all the way probably to, I forget, Hayes or Fort, wherever it switches to a two-way spot. And that's a corridor that actually could connect the freeway on LeTas Street from Americana from 15th all the way to the foothills. So you're actually talking about a massive network and a massive corridor that has a really sort of problematic middle section, and I think that we need to get that figured out. And so I think that we need to leverage some of our sources at CCDC to have that conversation and look into that and also the grants that may be available, and then also our five-year integrated work plan when we're looking at priority projects.
Well, and this is a topic that Bree will be bringing back with so that all of council is better briefed and can better participate in that conversation on the fifth.
Madam President, go ahead. So, Madam Mayor, Madam President, I'm pleased to hear that this, the city's moving this direction. As the oldest guy up here, when we, when we dealt with the when we dealt with the DBIP, the Downtown Boise Implementation Center, oh yeah, my glasses are very good. When we did DBIP, you'll remember, some of you may have remember, when we did Downtown Boise Implementation Plan, there was a boundary. And then the question, and the key component of DBIP was the conversion of downtown streets from one-way to two-way. It was largely for economic development reasons, but also for safety. But we created a boundary, and the question that was raised by the public a lot was, why didn't you include 5th and 6th? Why didn't you include 15th and 16th? And the answer sort of universally at that time was, this is about as far as what we can think we can get away with. It's a big lift to just do these streets inside this. Well, now is the time to look at Downtown Boise as a little bigger than what was the boundaries of DBIP. And that's why it's so critical because we now have data on safety and on economic investment on those corridors that were converted from one-way to two-way. And I think it behooves us as partners to say, this is a priority for both of those reasons. And there's no coincidence, I think, that we see the kind of safety issues on one-way streets that we don't see on two-way streets. And you understand the economic development issues, but you're seeing downtown investments along those old corridors that used to be one-way, Jefferson, Bannock, 13th, others that are that are thriving. There's people competing to invest in those areas. So it seems to me now is the time in order to do that and that ACHD and Boise can move on both of those. So I'm looking forward to seeing that move fairly quickly. I don't think we have to have quite the long reach that took us from the beginning of conversations on DBIP to finally approving it in somewhere around 2012 or 2013.
Madam Mayor, Madam President, great work to the staff and to you all. I'm excited to see this area getting attention. I wondered, is this two questions, actually. Is this direct result of the work that the review committee has been doing and as a result of the fatalities we've seen there, or is it, is there more planning that, is this has been on the radar for a long time? And then also, I guess to Councilmember Halliburton's question, how will this be illustrated in a way that people will respond to? Will there be, you know, I don't know, yes, how will we communicate that besides just a speed limit sign, I imagine?
Well, I mean, Jimmy, if you don't mind me just jumping in, I don't think this is a direct result of the the task force, the fatal review task force at all because we're still looking over the data from the last year and then some previous years as well. But it's definitely a heightened focus since the crashes that we experienced last year. And then looking at prior data, it's like this is a huge need. And I don't know if you guys heard, but we also approved a five FTE safety team, the first ever team for ACHD, and so that's the team that Matt now leads. And so like Matt was explaining that this is one of their biggest projects that they're tackling now since we've hired and established that team. So it's a new, it's a newer development and it requires one of the reasons why we decided to go through this path of having a multi-division team is we have to be able to really come up with solutions for these types of complex corridors like 15th and 16th. So usually when, you know, they're similarly to what Commissioner Hanson had talked about, there's a lot of baked-in history as to why the corridor is the way that it is. And so seeing like what we could do in the short term versus long term requires that planning versus those other elements that that team currently has. So it's a newer development. I don't quite know how to answer your second question about, is it how, how should the public be involved?
Well, I guess to clarify, like will there be, will we have the like speed limit trackers up there so that people slow down? Will it be flashing beacons? Will it be painted green? Like, are there, yeah, are there infrastructure, I guess, pieces that will help communicate that?
Great question. So the RRFB is going to be that yellow ped flashing marker? And then, Matt, do you want to speak to any of those other pieces?
Mayor, President, Council. Yes, so the, there will be a sign that alerts drivers with, it'll, the border of it will have LED lights on it, so hopefully it'll be more than just a standard street sign that will allow them. It'll say 20 miles per hour with an arrow showing that, you know, you're entering a speed reduction area. So we think with that, that'll alert drivers that, you know, rather than just a sign that you might not notice.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Madam Mayor, Madam Chair, if there is anything else, I know we've got just a little bit more time. I do think that there's probably worth doing some community outreach since this is a new slow zone that we haven't used before. I've been trying to get the word out with the press. Thanks for coming. And some other areas as this gets implemented for the first time. I think it's a pretty big deal and a pretty big step, you know, frankly, from ACHD to kind of move forward with this. And so one, I think that should be celebrated and shouted from the youth rooftops. But two, I think it would be a really good way for us to get people to understand what's happening here and for us to be, again, exploring other areas that may sort, may have similar circumstances. So I hope that in addition to having, you know, digital speed limited signs that tell people how fast they're going if they're above and beyond. What are they called? I always forget.
Feedback.
Yeah, the feedback signs, yeah.
Yeah, that's the one I can never remember. Yeah, those things I think at the beginning are going to be really, really important because it is going to be a rapid change and it isn't necessarily going to be the natural speed that folks have kind of been going for, for a long period of time. I do have one question, and this is probably for your staff. I don't know if there is any past information or studies of that corridor that talk about lane reductions, two-way traffic, if there's anything like that that exists currently, or if there, if that conversation we would be sort of starting from scratch.
I'm seeing Ryan say no.
Mayor McLean, Commission, Council, correct. This would be starting from scratch, and so we will be looking at it, monitoring that. Well, we do have counts that we can use against some of the national standards for lane reductions. But in this case, we want to understand the vision so that we, we kind of build that with that in mind.
And I guess just following up there, do we have information that says how those intersections are doing now, how they're rated? My anecdotal, you know, point of view, since I travel on a very frequent basis, both driving and biking, is that there's hardly ever what seems like failing, you know, or traffic signals that are related or rated at a really low level. It seems like there's always traffic moving through. And so it's designed for almost a higher level of traffic than what's going through. I don't know if there's any data that tells us that at this point, or again, if that would something we'd have to go back to the beginning to check out.
Council President Halliburton, yes, we do have data. We're able to see that. I don't know that there's been an intense traffic analysis done specifically with that question in mind, but we do know how those signals are operating, and I think anecdotally, you're accurate in that there is some capacity there that we can look at.
Right, thank you.
So if there's no other questions on this one, Madam Mayor, if I may, just give a little bit more context to our next item on our project update. So again, you've got some newer faces. We've got this really big project that's been in the works for several years now and is part of some bigger historical plans and projects as well with DBIP, but we wanted to, the intent of this update is to really get this project on your radar as a council because there's some really big decisions that have to be made this year about the future and concept and design of State Street, specifically between 8th and 14th. So that's right by the Y, the cap, you know, right up against the Capitol almost. That tapering down that happens on State Street. So we wanted to turn it over to staff to kind of give you a snapshot of where we are and when you can expect some bigger announcements in terms of concepts and what we'll need from you when that's ready.
Thank you, President Pickering, Mayor, members of the council and commission. For the record, my name is Tom Woz, and I'm the Planning Manager with Ada County Highway District. And with me in the audience is Aaron Williams, Senior Transportation Planner, and we are really leading this effort together for the State Street 8th to 14th Concept Study. Just as a reminder for those of you that were here, we did present the kickoff to this effort at the joint meeting last June. And so the intent of this presentation is really just to highlight the work that we've been doing to date since that time. We haven't been doing this alone, though. This has really been heavily relied with a, we've been relying on our interagency team. And so addition to Aaron and myself, we have Cody Holman with ACHD, our Senior Project Manager, who will eventually take on this project when it goes into that design phase and the construction phase with the city. Both Bree and Tessa have been critical, very, very helpful throughout the process providing feedback and their insights of the needs and desires of the city of Boise. This is also in the West Side Urban Renewal District, and so we have Zach Pete Meyer, the Parking and Mobility Director, as well as Kelly Burrows, a Project Manager with CCDC. And then finally being the State Street Best-in-Class Corridor, Stephen Hunt with the, with Valley Regional Transit Chief Development Officer is part of that team as well. Just broadly looking at the schedule, our intent is to wrap up this concept study aiming for July of this year. At that time, we want to roll immediately into the design phase and anticipate that that design phase will take the entirety of 2025. And then really kicking off the year 2026 with the construction of this corridor. And so since that June meeting, we've really focused on initial public feedback. And so the few images that you have right here include a walking audit that we, we went on with our pedestrian advisory group, bicycle advisory committee, and ADA advisory committee to really get a real-world experience and understanding of what the corridor and how, what it is, how it's functioning. In addition, we had several open houses directly targeted to the property owners along the corridor, and that's that image on the right. Back in the fall, we also had a public survey that went out, and overall, we saw just under 2,000 website visits, a little over 400 survey responses, a public open house and that property owner outreach as well. And really, across the board, the number one priority that we saw and we heard from the community was the need to improve those crossings across State Street for both pedestrians and bicyclists. That really was by and far the leading comment that we heard. And tied after that were really the next four items. So providing bicycle facilities, improving the pedestrian facilities, maintaining or improving the existing traffic congestion or vehicular facilities, and then providing left-turn lanes along the corridor to allow the movement to those off-streets from State Street. So the interagency, interagency team has taken this and, you know, I'd highlight that one thing that's really unique about this corridor is we're really constrained to an 80-foot cross-section, and that's largely due to several buildings along the corridor being right up against that property line and the sidewalk line. And so with that, what we found is we can do everything pretty well, or we can do a few things really, really well. And so those trade-offs are items that we've been really looking at, and it's starting off with looking at over 11 different treatment types, everything from two-lane cross-sections up to five. We've looked at bicycle and pedestrian level of stress, vehicular level of service, that crossing distance across State Street for bikes and peds, access management, the dedicated left-turn lanes, as I had mentioned, transit operations, the trade-offs between dedicated bike facilities on the corridor versus really supporting our two up-and-coming low-stress bikeways on either side of State Street being Franklin and Bannock. Landscaping, trees, both in the center medians and the buffers, and then what those buffer widths can be, and then lastly, parking. And really with all of this, our goal is to continue to refine over the next month and get down to three three alternatives that we then can bring back to the commission, the council, the public, to hopefully have one that rises to the top. Through all those trade-offs, though, there are items that we intend to bring forward with every single one of the alternatives. First and foremost, this, this project originally was, came about due to the pavement condition, and so we do intend to move forward with the full pavement rebuild of this, of this corridor. Incorporate traffic signals at 12th and 14th. There currently are none there today. Looking at access management, or sorry, accessibility improvements with leading pedestrian intervals at every intersection, accessible pedestrian signals and pedestrian ramps and ADA improvements. We do want to take a closer look at those center medians with landscaping, street trees, as well as access management. One thing that we're presuming and working with VRT are seven-minute transit headways for the corridor. So right now, within their Valley Regional Connect 2.0 plan, it's promoting a 15-minute headway or bus on this corridor of 15 minutes, and we want to take that one step forward to allow for that maximum flexibility as as this corridor moves along, if additional funding comes around to increase that headway even more. And then finally, improve stormwater and addition of silver cells on those, on those buffer areas. So finally, for next steps, our intent is on March 27th to bring the draft, three alternatives to the ACHD Commission for Consideration. Depending on the directions that we receive there, really over April, May, we'll be coming back to the interagency team providing updates to all of our partners as well as preparing for a public outreach that would take place in May. That'll include open house survey and door-to-door outreach along the corridor. Early summer, we'll refine those alternatives with the goal to have one clear, recommended alternative and have that proceed to the ACHD Commission for adoption in July of 2024. And so with that, I'm happy to stand for any questions.
Yeah, just for our own planning purposes. I appreciate this. It's great progress and for background, for new council members, it was about last year that this topic, it was deferred to enable this process now that we're looking at some different treatments for State Street. Do you, will you, you'll want, we will need to know when you would like feedback from and the official feedback from the city so that we can plan a discussion with council of those alternatives, probably have you come and present them.
Absolutely happy to.
Great, thanks.
Madam Mayor, I just want to highlight a thing that Tom shared, and there's a lot of considerations with this corridor, you know, and Tom showed what you can absolutely expect in whatever treatment goes forward, but there's a lot of other if you looked at the, we went through it really fast, but the top five priorities of the respondents that live or travel. Oh yeah, do you mind going back, Tom, or could we show that really quickly? That one, there you go. And it's kind of hard to see up there, but you know, those top five priorities, the number one was for pedestrians, walking and biking, you know, getting to the high school, all of those things. So Tom mentioned, and I just want to reinforce it, that really the task at hand for all of us to consider is do we attempt to support every user, all different types, and not really serve any of them in the best way? Or do we try to prioritize and make this corridor exceptional for the top priority users? And so I think that's the big question that we're going to have to wrestle with and look forward to the discussion with all of you about where that priority should be.
Well, I appreciate that. And also to flag too, I mean, there, there's a lot of north and south movement right now. But in the next five years, there'll be many more people living between 8th and 14th Street, either directly adjacent to State Street or on State Street. And so this corridor, by the time this is completed, will have changed quite a bit.
And just one thing too, this, this project will be done in concrete. So it's more expensive than usual because of the type that we're installing, and that means that it also lasts a lot longer. So we're looking at, you know, a generation, a lifetime of folks living with this design. So we're looking at, you know, a generation, a lifetime of folks living with this design. So we want to think ahead and not just, again, like how it's being used today.
Madam President, Madam Mayor, this may be a question for staff. When those, you said, three concepts come forward, do you anticipate one of the concepts being, trying to squeeze all five things into one, or is, or is that not an option?
Madam President, Mayor, and Councilmember Hallie Burton, so absolutely, I think what we're really looking at right now, whittling it down to those three, is one that more or less keeps the existing cross-section today with enhancements all along the corridor. So a five-lane cross-section as you're further to the west, and then as you get east closer to downtown, it really converts to a three, then all the way down to a two, a two-lane right behind the Capitol. So that will be the, really the largest footprint, and the other two that we're considering would likely bring it down closer to like a three-lane, a two-lane cross-section.
Yeah, you know, it's hard to get everything in one. And there's kind of the saying of like, don't let perfect be the enemy of good. And I think when you're trying to get everything in there in only 80-foot wide spot, it's a really, really big challenge. And so I hope as we're kind of considering these three options, we're also looking at, and you brought this up earlier, what are the streets next to it supporting as well? Because there's a chance that even if we can't get bike lanes, the ones, the kinds that we might want to see on State Street, but we have enhanced ones one block over, that there may be some options there. And so, you know, as we're getting those options, you know, knowing, I think, what's the plans are for the side streets will be important for us in making those decisions too.
Madam President, Madam Mayor, just a little context, as you know, that used to be, this used to be State Highway 44, and then State Highway 44 goes down Glenwood. But at the same time that the DBIP was being developed, Whitewater Park Boulevard was being developed with the understanding that if you're heading to south, the south end of downtown, you shouldn't, all of the automobile traffic shouldn't be coming down to Ninth Street and turning, turning right. So in that context, we should look at the whole corridor and see, this is, this is part of the larger corridor. What do we do currently that invites people to use that instead of going down Whitewater? We still get a lot more traffic down State Street, and Whitewater is still significantly underused. So you've already made, we've already made these investments in connectivity. And just like you've mentioned, there are other streets, the great thing about it, there is connectivity, especially south of State Street. And so we should look at those numbers, and why aren't they using Jefferson and Bannock and Main and Idaho? So understanding that we can't do everything in that 80-foot, but we've already invested in other streets significantly, multimillion-dollar efforts in building these other options for people of other moods. So just to recognize, this isn't, we can't do everything in this segment, and we're not going to do.
Yeah, that's right, that's right. Sorry about that. It's like, ready to hand it over to you.
That's because I took it away.
All right, so now we have the pathways policy update. So we really proud that the commission, we've adopted four, four new ordinances last year. And one of them was putting this pathway policy that was in practice, but actually into ordinance authority at the district. So just wanted to share more about that, and especially as it relates to your pathways plan. So, Ryan.
Push the button. Thank you, Madam President, Madam Mayor, Council, Commission. For the record, Ryan Head, Deputy Director of Development and Technical Services. As, as Commission President said, our pathway policy really was a formalization of what the commission had already directed staff to do. And for a few years now, ACHD has been incorporating multi-use pathways. So a bike and pedestrian facility as part of our capital projects. But what we hadn't been able to do yet is incorporate that from the very beginning with development. And so this policy was a modification to ACHD's development code that allows us to now require pathways, and we'll talk a little bit more about what that means. But ultimately, the vision is really this, of what that pathway policy was meant to do. It creates the opportunity for a multi-use pathway along arterials and collector roadways. It envisions with that having an eight-foot buffer where you can have street trees and other amenities or other types of landscaping where development can incorporate those things and maintain those. It results in a narrower street section. As you move the bike lane out to behind the curb, you're able to narrow up curb to curb, which has some benefit not only from a, how those are maintained, but it also has some benefits from an environmental perspective, as well as from managing the speeds on those roads. As well as we, through this policy, we looked at what are the design speeds of those roadways? And how do we design our roads so that from the very beginning, there are appropriate speeds that are occurring? Just, this is just an overview of how that process went. This policy was adopted last September, and we have been implementing that as part of our staff reports ever since. Just want to, just go over some of those details. I've talked a little bit about those. But first and foremost, we're talking about pathways adjacent to arterials and collector roadways. So this, ACHD has that jurisdiction, and we want to make sure that those facilities provide connections that really meet the level of traffic stress standards that the commission has adopted, that are comfortable for all ages and abilities. Now, going along an arterial is difficult and for, for some ages and abilities. And so we want, that's where some of the additional features we've talked about, such as the buffering and some of those other things come into play. Part of this, we tied this back to Idaho law. ACHD has responsibility for, and we can include as part of our roads, sidewalks and side paths. And so we had to make that connection to make sure that we are staying in alignment with that. The, the policy sets forth that the pathway will be a minimum of 10 feet, but grants the ability for staff to use some discretion depending on the site's specific conditions. So if there are places where we anticipate a much heavier use, adjacent to schools, parks, we can incorporate even a slightly wider pathway in that process. Noted the reduction in the pavement width and the buffering. Now, just to clarify, as far as it comes to street trees, because of the maintenance of those, ACHD really is just going to be recommending and encouraging street trees because ACHD doesn't have the forces to maintain those trees. But we are, we are seeking to still encourage them. We're also looking for opportunities to, from a, from an environmental perspective, encourage that they are, they be softscape'd so that we have the opportunity to still have the water staying as close to the source there as it falls. As it, as roadways approach intersections, our policy and best practices is that those pathways divert to some, they have an offset away from the intersection. And really, the intent of that is to improve visibility for vehicles that may or may not, and bikes and pedestrians, or bicyclists and pedestrians, so that they're all seeing each other well. By directing them away, it gives a greater opportunity for them to be seen as a vehicle is turning those corners. We also, through this process, set forth a lower design speed for our collector roadways, indicating that they would be designed to 25 miles per hour. Most are, would be signed at that. We do have some that are signed a little bit higher. But the goal of this is to try and build the roads in a way that they really anticipate the traffic and address the speeding that does occur on these, especially on a collector roadway where you expect a little bit more heavy use by other modes of traffic besides just the vehicle. We also, for arterials, one thing with an arterial being those main roads that we have out there, those are generally already built, right? And so, and when you're talking about width development, a development may have 100 feet of frontage, they may have a mile of frontage, and it really depends on how big of a development they are going to be addressing, especially when you talk about the city of Boise, where there is a lot of development that's already occurred. But we did set forth what's called, we're just calling a target speed, so that if there are features, if there are things that can be done, that they seek to incorporate that, to encourage those speeds. ACHD also has set forth a standard as we build capital arterial improvements that the roads would be signed afterwards to 35 miles an hour. So that, really, we want to try and incorporate that through this process. We clarified, you know, what it means to meander. Ultimately, the goal is to that these be straight facilities, and so they're useful for all people. We also added some additional language that allows us, in places, you know, as a road builds out, you may not have as many driveways, and so you may not actually necessarily need the center turn lane in those locations. And we recognize the benefit of not necessarily having all that asphalt for when it doesn't necessarily need to be used. So we did provide staff the ability to reduce the cross-section down, down where that opportunity presents itself, especially in preserving the width of those pathways and buffers, just to make sure that that's, you know, letting that be the standard first, and as opposed to the roadway with the standard. Just making sure that those pathways really meet the needs and we're accommodating all users. Just want to thank the city for its input, because through the input we received from your staff and from you all through this process, it really did make the policy better, and we did incorporate your feedback into that. But with that, I'll stand for any, I'll sit for any questions or feedback.
Thanks, Ryan. I just want to add that, you know, as it relates to the entire county, we see this policy implemented differently in different parts of the county, just given on the growth, right, the land use vision. So for instance, Meridian, right, like there, they have a lot of arterials, not as many collectors and residential roads that would require this type of pathway potentially, right? You guys are fairly built out, but I think I just wanted to, you know, put this into reality, or at least get an idea of like what this looks like, is this would be an important policy when we talk about the State Street improvements that are going to be widened, right, for the TTOP and then VRT. So, you know, how do we make sure that not only is this going to be the premier bus route, but folks can travel safely, walking or biking, to get to that bus stop, or not to that bus stop, just the other part of town that happens to be on State Street? So that's where this pathway really will shine and connects to some of those bigger arterials that you guys are going to be having in the city.
Madam, oh, sorry.
No, go ahead.
Oh, and, and both Madams. So I think you were touching on this, but that's, I guess I was looking for a little bit more context on when and when this is implemented. Is it only when there's new development? Is it only for, you know, does it happen for redevelopment? Does it happen for that 100 feet at a time? When are we seeing this implemented?
Madam President, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Sted, that is a great question, and the devil is in the details, right? Part of what we tried to incorporate into this is a lot of flexibility for staff, so that they have that, they can look at the site-specific conditions. If, if you do have 100 feet, right, it's very difficult to transition from nothing to 100 feet to the street and back and forth for those short distances, especially when on both sides you may have a five-foot sidewalk, right? And so the plan through this process is to try and get the best facility we can. So through this, we incorporated some, some other types of treatments that, that weren't really in our policy before, including buffered bike lanes and protected bike lanes and cycle tracks, making those options for staff. If we can't get a pathway because of the existing conditions or the length of it, that we at least have other options to try and improve and enhance that. Recognizing that a short, and the plan, this is development policy, so we would only require this through development. But we also connected that to also our CIP, so that when we are, our capital improvements plan, so that there is a plan to complete those facilities. If we do them in small pieces, we at least will be able to connect the dots in between.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. I appreciate that. I love this, and I, I would be encouraging of trying to do it as often as possible. From my experience on planning and zoning, you know, we pushed all the time on people looking for variances or to get out of doing curb gutter sidewalk. And we said all the time, you know, even if it's just one parcel at a time, there's so much redevelopment happening, and someday we'll end up with the green belt, you know, if we can piece it together one at a time. So I really appreciate the effort here and encourage, encourage it whenever it's appropriate.
Thank you.
So, go ahead.
Madam President, Madam Mayor, can I ask a quick question? Mr. Head, are there any types of these pathways that currently planned in southwest Boise or south Boise?
Madam President, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Corliss, yes, absolutely. In fact, ACHD has been building out sections of those arterial roadways, and that would be the plan, is to implement these throughout southwest Boise as this gets implemented. So we've recently done a mile of Eagle Road between Amity and Victory. The next mile to Lake Hazel's planned, all along Lake Hazel, this will be the plan. And then as we do each of the corridors of Cloverdale Five Mile, Maple Grove, each of those would be the, that would be the plan moving forward. The one section, we recently did a Maple Grove where we did the on-street bike lanes, that was, we were already so far down that process before we were able to implement this kind of a treatment. But the plan will be to do this moving forward, yes.
I've got two questions. That's why I keep, I took away your chairing, because I keep trying to ask my question, and then I pass it to somebody else. So I can ask my question, so you can take over again. Two, one with kind of the, the finance planning hat on. Who maintains these pathways? Who's expected to maintain them?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. These, these pathways are, as a 10-foot pathway, there's kind of two pieces to this. One, they still kind of fall under the perspective of a sidewalk. That said, ACHD has purchased and is using our, we purchased mini sweepers that are able to maintain these. And so we're able to go along these pathways, along some of the protected bike lanes, and get into smaller areas and drive down them with this, this kind of small sweeper tool.
That's great to hear. And then with more of a mom hat on, is it clear when these are built that like kiddos and anybody really can ride in them? But I just imagine like walking down and like seeing a whole pack of kids on their bikes on one of these, so they're not on the busy road. And then like somebody else yelling like, get off the sidewalk. So I'm wondering if it's allowed, because we want them on the sidewalk, right? This is how we keep everybody safe. Like, so how, is it clear?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Under, under the federal guidance, a minimum pathway is actually eight foot. Or, but as building them as 10-foot pathways, that really does demonstrate that they are built to be a multi-use facility, and through, by definition, being connected to that Idaho code, that they are a side path, that that really does make them useful for all.
Oh, no, I, I'm sorry, I wasn't clear. I think these are great, and they're super useful for everybody. But how does like the regular person know that bikes are allowed on them? Is there signage? What do we do? Because I don't want to have those situations where, you know, because we don't all know federal code. Where, although that would be a really fun response, if I was walking down the bike, the, this side path and heard somebody yell at the pack of kids. But wondering, you know, how like the regular person, taking advantage of the side path on foot, knows when they see bikes on it, that they're allowed, or that like a parent would be, know to tell their kids that, you know, they're allowed to be on these pathways.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. There are some things that we are incorporating. There are, you know, signage that we include along those pathways. We also, a lot of these are part of our bikeway network, so there's, there's indications on those.
Great.
That, that these are part of those bikeways, and there's signage that goes into play on that as well.
Great, thanks. They're signed, like on the Fort Street one that is there, but I was curious if we'd be doing that everywhere. But I was curious if we'd be doing that everywhere.
Yeah, if you think of Federal Way, that, you know, there's a good indication there that that's what that facility is for.
That's a great example. Right, thank you.
Madam Mayor, President. Question kind of related to this, and you brought up Federal Way, actually. I would also ask if there's signage there that helps users identify speed. So when we're talking about bikes on pathways, that's changed dramatically over the past handful of years as e-bikes have become more and more accessible, which are great options, especially in areas like the bench, where you got hills and you need that extra power. But, you know, I've driven down Federal Way, where I've had an e-bike keeping pace with me at 40 miles per hour, right? Almost keeping pace, but pretty dang close. So is there any kind of policy for helping educate, maybe on these pathways? Also, that proper kind of e-bike usage? Obviously, there's code that limits what kinds of e-bikes we're using. But just educational opportunities where perhaps it's a, hey, if you count five seconds between this line and that line, and you got to it quicker than five seconds, you're going too fast. Things like that. Has there been any kind of talk about safety in that regard for our pathways?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor, Madam President. The, great question. ACHD does have a "Let's Get There Safely" education campaign, which we can use to provide some of this education. I'll tell you, the policy is only six months old, and as you know, development takes a long time to actually build something out. And so we haven't got to a place where we've needed to do a ton of education like that, but that is a great insight, and something that we can use our existing tools to try and get that message out.
And Councilman Morales, I would like to add that ACHD, even though, yes, we could do some signage or a policy, we don't have enforcement authorities. So, you know, that type of thing would open up a can of worms around, how do we enforce that partnering with the city? And, you know, is that a good use of resources and all that good stuff? But yes, I think that's a great point, and we'll continue to monitor it for sure.
Madam President, Madam Mayor, I just want to highlight Councilmember Stead's comment, because we do have development. You have development pending on some of these arterials. And we should move forward now, looking toward, and I'm looking at Overland and Fairview, older parts of Fairview and Overland. They have painted bike lanes that aren't used, obviously, because they're just dangerous. Nobody uses them. They already cycle on the sidewalk. But as development happens, that curb needs to come in to the width of the arterial and the bike facility be with the sidewalk as part of the path. Now, the issue like on the older parts of Overland and Fairview, there's not enough width. So actually, our policy contemplates there may be a physical vertical barrier to help protect that. But the transitions, I think what will happen is if, once there's some development along there, and you see the transition from the unused bike lane onto the multi-used path in front of this property, property developers and people who use that will start to realize, okay, this is what the future is supposed to look like. What I hope we don't do is with new development and maintenance on these old arterials, is we keep the old curb lines. That would be really bad, because then you're just kicking that down the road, and the implementation of our policy will only be for new arterials. And I think that it's really important that these old arterials be gradually redesigned so that they function. And frankly, it'll make it safer for, currently, like there's attached sidewalks that people feel very unsafe on, because you're so close to traffic, to provide that buffer for walkers as well. So that's why I hope that as, in the development process with Boise, and with, because the old arterials are in Boise, happens at the staff level with our staff saying, okay, well, how can we be creative? And yeah, it's going to transition, and yeah, people probably aren't going to really bicycle on that one section for a while, but it'll telegraph to the world, this is how it's, this is what the future is, and this is what the expectation is.
Madam Mayor, Madam President, just a couple of things, I know we got to move along. To Councilman Morales's question, we don't quite have it figured out on the green belt yet. But this is probably a really good opportunity for us to be working on that together, because we are seeing all sorts of different types of uses. We don't have a great way of policing what classification of e-bike somebody's using. And there's all sorts of other new motorized skateboards, and I don't know what all of them are, that are using the green belt at the same time. And so this is probably a really great opportunity for, as the city is kind of figuring out what we want to be doing on the green belt, working with ACHD at the same time, to make sure that it sort of overlaps with the rest of your pathway policy, our own pathway plan. And I think speaking to that from like a broader lens, when it comes to figuring out, you know, is there signage on these pathways? You know, how can we figure out where we're supposed to go? This really does dovetail right into our own Pathways Master Plan. And as these are getting built out, especially in these larger strips, we probably need to figure out a way to actually combine them into our Pathways Master Plan. So one of these great pathways in South Boise connects to another pathway, and that they're, that those are complementing and working together as far as the rules go, the signage goes, the wayfinding, you know, all those different types of things. Because that really is our goal, is to be looking at these different stretches for off-street networks. And so as you're solving those problems, and as we're solving those problems, we probably should be solving them together, because I think they're directly linked. And I'm glad that Councilperson Corliss brought up South Boise, because I think that South Boise is where these are going to be just absolutely amazing, because we know that there's a lot of larger street projects that we're evaluating. So we have some big opportunities to have some of the scariest streets to walk or ride a bike on, to get in some really good sections of pathways that could connect to ours. So super exciting that this dovetails so nicely into our own.
Great. Well, I want to thank you, too. This is, I'll echo Councilmember Hallie Burton's comments. This is a great policy and exciting to think about what it means for, you know, especially South Boise, Southwest Boise, and Ada County in general. But there are going to be opportunities. That means State Street's the perfect one, perfect example here. And great dovetail your comments into our own Pathways presentation. And I just want to say, Dan will be talking about this. He's our Pathways Program Manager. I agree that as we build out ours, or even with the visioning that we have now for where they are, that the more we can connect them, so that residents can see the potential for yours and ours, I think is wonderful. And this is a great opportunity for us to collaborate as we look at how we implement, make possible some of these pathways that have been envisioned through the plan that was created by great Citizens Committee. And so Dan, sorry, Dane, will share with you where we're at right now.
Thank you. Madam President, Madam Mayor, members of council, members of commission, thank you all for your time. We, I gave this presentation or something very similar to council last week, and we thought it would be super useful to, again, provide a similar update to the commission, understand where the Pathways Program stand-up is, and kind of some of our next steps and progress moving forward. If I don't say collaboration 15 times in the next 15 minutes, I will have failed at something. So I think that's the foundation that we're starting with. Today, you know, we're going to provide a super brief background on the Pathways Plan and what our vision is, provide a high-level overview of the Pathways Program and where we are in the stand-up, at which point we'll turn and look at implementation, again, with that focus on coordination and alignment between our two agencies. And we'll close kind of looking at the city's next steps towards project implementation. So super briefly, the Pathways Master Plan was adopted in January of 2022. It envisions 160-mile pathway network building off the spine of the green belt to connect more than 75% of Boise residents to within a 10-minute walk of a pathway. And that pathway would take them to schools, parks, places of employment, grocery stores, places people want to go. Completion of this network would make a dramatic impact on our shared goals around mobility choice, safety, accessibility, and climate. So at the highest level, the Pathway Master Plan contemplates three classifications of pathways, the first being what I call pathways, which are fully separated green belts. They're away from the roadway travel corridor. They travel along rivers, canals, through parks and open space, and through new redevelopment. The second classification that we talk about is side paths, and this is what the ACHD's pathway policy contemplates, is pathways that travel along roadway corridors. I'm going to go ahead and just reiterate the importance of that physical separation, vertical barriers, street trees, in making those safe and comfortable facilities. And then third, facilities are on-street facilities. These are our sidewalks. These are our bikeways. These are our bike lanes. And those real first-last-mile connections that get a user from their front door onto a bikeway, onto a pathway, onto a side path to her school. That's the kind of infrastructure network that the Pathway Plan weaves together, to connect residents to destinations. So following the first recommendation within the Pathways, Pathways Master Plan, the city of Boise established the Pathways Program and hired dedicated Pathways staff, that's me, within the Mobility and Public Spaces team and the Pathways Program, at the highest level is really responsible for holding the vision described within the Pathways Master Plan, and seeing that incorporated into planning, into project prioritization, into project selection, and ultimately, implementation. One of our first tasks was to build on the opportunities analysis that the Pathways Master Plan sort of embodies, and connect that into a Pathways Network vision that begins to articulate how we want to use those segments to connect the entire city and to connect residents to the green belt and to places they want to go. Yeah, and this vision is supported by neighborhood-level planning that takes place both at ACHD and within our own teams to make those more local neighborhood and school connections as well. So with that, we'll turn towards project implementation. Again, at the highest level, there are three ways a pathway project from the Pathways Master Plan is implemented, through the development and entitlement process, through our partner and inter-agency projects, and through city-led capital projects. And we'll take each in turn. But we're going to talk a little more about the inter-agency projects than we did before. We discussed the entitlement and development review process in some detail last week, so I'll be fairly brief. But this is where the Pathways Master Plan links with the Modern Zoning Code. Our department has seen a dramatic increase in development applications since the passage of the Modern Zoning Code. And each of these is an opportunity to acquire access and connectivity to support the Pathways Plan. It also provides great opportunities for staff to collaborate and ensure we have coherent projects coming through. The interdepartmental review process, the IDR, provides an opportunity for staff from the city of Boise, staff from ACHD and VRT to sit down with developers and work on specific sites and problems to come to the best possible infrastructure we can get to. I think a great example of this is, we had recent meetings around the CWI campus project. So this is on Main and Whitewater, and how to use that site, and how to use that redevelopment opportunity to, again, serve local residents and the broader network for transit, for pathways, and for on-street cycle tracks in the best way that we can. The second way pathways are implemented are through our partner agency coordination. It will come as no surprise to anyone in this room that our staff are constantly coordinating to ensure that the Pathways Master Plan is visible and incorporated into the planning process of our partner agencies like ACHD. And similarly, that the city's pathway projects respond to and incorporate the on-street and side-path network articulated by ACHD's bikeways plan and pedestrian network. Through this work, we are truly developing a shared vision for how the city's pathway, pedestrian, bicycle network is meant to function, and how to implement that. Beyond that, we obviously coordinate extensively on capital planning. Some of the priority on-street and, give me a second, on-street and side-path connections articulated within the Pathways Master Plan are going to be foregrounded in our inter, our five-year working plan recommendations. So you'll see that synergy growing. And obviously, the project level, we look, we work on designs and make sure that our projects are unlocking opportunities for each other. Again, just a brief example of this in action was the West Bench Neighborhood Plan that ACHD recently adopted, I think it's adopted, foregrounds several Pathways Master Plan projects, and I think presents a really coherent network that uses both on-street and off-street facilities, and identifies the different roles within it. And I think that was a real success of planning moving forward. So with that, we'll look at our city capital projects and some of our next steps. I'd like to just quickly acknowledge the ongoing works of the city's Parks Department in this area. They are continuing to advance and implement other pathway projects besides what I'll be speaking about here today, particularly the Goddard Linear Park. So the first pathway project being led by the Pathways Program is the Kasha Garden Pathway Connection. This runs from the Kasha Street Bikeway and Kasha Pathway through Kasha Park to the Gardens, the, is Garden Street? To the Garden Street Bikeway improvements that are currently under construction. This is a key connection that by proximity would connect 11,000 residents. But if you include both of those bikeway corridors, it's something like 27,000 residents that are connected to the green belt, to parks, to schools. And really begins to knit together the kind of central bench. Design for this is ongoing through that first kind of environmental review phase. We expect design of this to continue for the next two fiscal years. And public outreach will begin kind of later this spring around those concepts. The second project to speak about quickly is the Broadway Federal Way Pathway. I see this as a key connection that begins to knit together the city and solve some of the existing barriers caused by existing infrastructure and topography within the region. This would facilitate bike and pedestrian travel getting off of the Federal Way, bike path, side path, down to the Leadville Avenue Bikeway, again, really connecting that South Bench, the, yeah, the bench, the central bench, to the green belt via that Leadville Avenue. And that then gets you to Park Center, that gets you to Boise State University, that gets you to the downtown core. So it is really one of those key gaps that we're filling. Similarly, we're going through design this year. And I'm really excited to see what comes out of this project. I'll speak briefly about our next steps. And as we discussed a little bit more at length last week, we have a set of projects that we're going to pursue next. Those include the Spalding Ranch Connection, which goes from the Spalding Ranch Park site on Coal Road to Capitol High, tying all the way into Milwaukee. Again, this is going to provide pathway connectivity for something like 4,700 residents, and really support those connections to schools in the area. The second pathway project that we're advancing at this point is the first key connection within the broader Spoils Bank network. This runs from Hill Road to the River Glen Junior High School in Northwest Boise, and really focusing on improving those neighborhood connectivities to schools there in the area. And I think there's real opportunity for agencies to coordinate around the development of a Pathways Project Pipeline. I'm actually really excited about some of the work ACHD's teams have been doing on the Access to Opportunities Raise Grant. I think that that project is really making possible the opportunity to improve bike-ped connectivity in several of the city's underserved neighborhoods. And while that is incredibly beneficial in and of its own, it will unlock several pathway opportunities, closing those first-and-last-mile gaps and really improving the functionality of whole neighborhoods at a time. Similarly, I think we have a great opportunity to collaborate around unopened right-of-way, and right-of-way that's not expected to be opened in the near future. This is publicly-owned land, and these are opportunities to invest in that publicly-owned land and have it serve for, have it serve the public. You know, I think there are opportunities to make those quick wins and to develop shared expectations and understandings of workflows and how to make those projects move forward quickly. And lastly, you know, I think there's real opportunity to coordinate around the boring government bureaucracy work of making license agreements and design review rhythms. And the review process runs smoothly and efficiently and speedily, and that'll only free up capacity to make, for both teams to make more projects successful. I'm going to speak briefly to just say that I think user education and pathway etiquette campaigns are well within the purview of this program, and something that would be really beneficial to making these facilities serve more residents. I'll pause there and answer any questions you all have.
Madam Mayor? Dane, thank you for this great presentation. I just want to acknowledge like how far we've come. I think both organizations, I think also just recognizing how, and having amazing staff that see how coordinated and integrated what some people think are very separate conversations. And just having that mindset within your team is going to help us understand how access to opportunities, how that actually can have this ripple effect, right, to other ways that folks can get around that are beyond just our right-of-way. So I just want to say like that, that type of mindset shift hasn't been here all the time. And in terms of just generally, I think as an organization from us and from the city, and just, that's a really big deal. So thank you for that. I just want to highlight, too, like the coordinated project pipeline piece. We're definitely learning and trying to figure out how to be better with that coordination piece. I can think of like Goddard Linear Park, for example. In my district, there was a lot of like pinch points around, how do we get that going smoother? So I think if we can continue to keep the communication channels open as to where- So I think if we can continue to keep the communication channels open as to where there's, you know, our jurisdiction and authority in creating the access to those pathways, it's in our right-of-way and how we can do a better job of making that smoother, all ears as usual for that. And then really appreciate your point about the unopened right-of-way side of things. I've seen that a lot, for instance, on Central Rim, Harding Street, that pathway. You know, that was also ACHD unopened right-of-way and was inhibiting, you know, folks from getting to the green belts in a really easy way. So loving that type of outlook and you guys seeing those opportunities and working with the neighborhoods to, to use that right-of-way in a more efficient way. So love it and thank you for doing that really important work and excited to continue to partner with you guys on that.
All right, we're all getting the 5:00 PM LOL. Oh, of course.
I have to get the last word.
Let's have Commissioner Goldthorpe, let's, let's save you for last, Commissioner Hanson.
Madam Mayor made a comment earlier about what it's like sitting next to Commissioner President Pickering. And I, I know that only too well. I, I do want to, for your peace of mind, especially Councilmember Hallie Burton and our, one of our commission lawyers, Commissioner Hansen, that we will, without exception, make sure that everyone is still able to mosey along on our meandering pathways. That's all I have to say. Dane, remember that.
All right.
I, I was excited that Dane obviously knew that I was going to be here because he put the Federal Way project up there. But I just want to point out that, that now that we have, we're, we operate by, on a district level in the city, there are projects that we want you to know more about. So and the deadline for the city to submit their priorities. So I'm sure you'll be wrestling with each other, saying, no, the priorities are there. If you have questions.
Jim, we have committed to remain one city, one team, despite the districting. And to think about all people.
That's right. So I can't, I can't help myself. I fight for the little projects in my districts that are also in Councilmember Sted's district, Morales's district and Corliss's district. And they've already heard from me.
Well, and I just want to clarify, Commissioner Hansen's talking about the deadline for the integrated five-year work plan. So yes, thank you. Just want to clarify that.
Madam Mayor, President Pickering, I'm not sure what's happening right now, but I don't know when our, our next meeting is going to be. Our next joint meeting is going to be. And so I just thought I would take a point of personal privilege. I'm not sure, you know, when the big retirement date's going to be, if it will intersect between when our next meeting is. I want to say thank you, Director Wong, for all of your years of service, for the time that I've been in office and the time before. Like President Pickering said earlier, the relationship that we have now between ACHD and the city is much better than it was before in the past. And I think a lot of that is owed to everyone at this table. But Director Wong, your willingness to work with the city, to grow with the city and to evolve and change and to respond to the different direction. And it really has been a pleasure working with you, even from a, a different, different side of the, I don't know, jurisdiction's not the right word, but a different agency. It's been great to partner with you over the years. And I just want to say thank you for the service in case there isn't an opportunity at another joint meeting in the future.
We, we will gather again before the director leaves and we'll make sure we have time to see the kind things that Jimmy just said and more. All right, with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Oh, before I do that, I want to say thanks, everybody. This was really interesting information, great conversation. As the council member said, we've come far. But the, and, and I too, I want to acknowledge, as you did, the work that our staff is doing together is different. I noted it. I wouldn't say different, but like much, it's deeper.
It's integrated.
It's, yeah, it's deeper. I noted it when, when your team was speaking as well as our team. And so just, just want to acknowledge that and thanks, thank everybody that's a part of that. And look forward to coming together yet again, but we'll be talking more in the meantime. And we do have for the city, the discussion on March 5th for Integrated Work Plan. And with that, I take a motion to adjourn.
Madam Mayor, Madam President, I move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? All right, we are adjourned.
Meeting adjourned.